Call to order, the organizational and business meeting of the Board of Education for Wyandotte Public Schools scheduled for Tuesday, July 15, 2025, held here in the City Council chambers of City Hall. Roll call, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Here.
Member Kane?
Here.
Member Kinney?
Here.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Here.
Member Martinez?
Absent.
Member Weber?
Here.
President Sirkovich?
Here, we have a quorum. All right, we're going to begin with introductions today. Actually, board members are going to give some background about themselves, since this is our organizational meeting, how long they've been board members, term expirations, and just kind of facts that they want to share about themselves, because this is kind of the beginning of our 2025-26 school year for us. All right, so, Ms. Weber, can I start with you?
You can.
All right, and then we're just going to come right around.
Okay. Hello, my name is Kelly Weber. I have been a board member since 2022, so this will be my third year. Currently, I am a legal risk and compliance manager for a national lender, mortgage lender. I have a child in the district. He's going into ninth grade, so yay, go Bears, Roosevelt Bears. And I'm married, I've been married for 21 years to my husband, and we reside here in Wyandotte and have been here for the last 18 years. Thank you. All right, Ms. Kinney?
Hello, my name is Cindy Kinney. I was born here in Wyandotte, raised, I've been to Wyandotte schools the whole time, graduated in 1977 from Roosevelt. And then I attended Wayne County Community College and received an Associate in Business, then I got Associate in Nursing, and then went to UD Mercy and got my Bachelor's in Nursing. I just retired in February from Corwell Health, Wayne, as the Septus and Stroke Coordinator and ER Nurse after 37 years. So it's been a little change. I've been a little busy with the house, but everybody says you have a lot of fun. Well, I've been doing nothing but work, so I'm hoping this summer I have fun. And I have been on the board for, this is my third term, my 11th year, and I was elected in '14 and started serving in January of '15. And I've thoroughly learned a lot from a lot of people here, and I hope to learn a lot more. And I enjoy working with the kids. I go to schools and just do what the teachers want me to do. I'll say, what do you want me to do today? And that's what I do. So, because they're the boss. But that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Ms. Kane?
I'm Kathleen Kane, a lifelong resident of Wyandotte and went to Wyandotte schools, graduated in 1975. I'm a fifth year on the board. I've served as Secretary for two terms, Treasurer and Vice President. I taught for 34-plus years, 33 of those years were here in Wyandotte Public Schools. I taught in Washington, McKinley, and Garfield, Wilson, and Roosevelt throughout those 33 years. I traveled nationally and internationally with the RHS Acapella Choir from the year 2000 through 2020. I served as Department Chair for over 20 years until I retired in 2020. I continue to direct and conduct the Wyandotte Academy Youth Choir, which is made up of children from Wyandotte Public Schools. I serve as camp administrator for our marching band camp. I oversee and assist with many fundraiser fundraising opportunities for specific events here in the city for our music department in connection with different places in our community. I sing in my church choir. I am married 44 years this September to my husband, Robert. We have two beautiful daughters, Cassandra and Angela, who both went to Wyandotte Public Schools. Grandchildren Zoe, Daphne, Cooper, and Maddie, and Zoe and Daphne both attend Wyandotte Public Schools.
Thanks, Kathy. Okay, I'll go last. I'm going to scoop around to Wendy.
To me. I am Wendy Lo Cicerow. I have been, this is my, entering my third year on the board, and I have three daughters in the district attending RHS and two at Wilson. My husband of 15 years, I think we're almost at 16, is a lifelong resident, attended Wyandotte, graduated in 1989. I am a Wyandotte transplant and have been here for the last 15 years or so. And I work as a marketing director for a nonprofit association. And then in my free time, I'm wherever my kids are, softball, band, tennis, whatever they're doing.
Awesome.
Thanks.
My name is Nick Bevan Partial, and my husband and I live here in Wyandotte. I was elected most recently in 2024, so I took, my first term took office at the beginning of this year. I previously worked in Wyandotte Public Schools. I was an instructional aide at Monroe Elementary back in 2019 to 2021. I'm currently a kindergarten teacher at Huron Public Schools. And outside of advocating for our kids and our schools, I love gardening. So I restarted the Wyandotte Garden Club, and yeah, so if I'm not helping kids somewhere, I'm probably planting a flower.
Awesome. Thanks. All right, and my name is Teresa Sirkovich. I am a fifth-generation Wyandotte resident of our charming historic waterfront community here. I've lived here my whole life, but as a homeowner with my husband for 31 years. We've been married and living on the South Side. We're proud South Side residents, close enough to walk to the art fair. We have, our two children are both graduates of RHS. One is a graduate of EMU and working professionally in the Ann Arbor area, and the other one is currently, I can't believe I'm saying this, junior year of EMU, is my baby. Professionally, I am an educator who has spent 32 years in education. I've taught at the elementary, middle school, alternative high school, and college level, and most recently, in the last 16 years, I've been a field supervisor for EMU College of Education, working with beginning teachers as they start their career. As in the board, I was seated in 2019. This is my second term. And I would say the highlight of my board service, of course, is always reading to students. I'm a big advocate of literacy, of course, being a former elementary school teacher, serving as officer, but I think the highlight of my service is just working with my board colleagues. I've learned a lot from them. We're continuing to learn and grow together, and it just, learning to kind of grow and work with them professionally and personally has been a highlight of my service. So, thank you. All right, that concludes our introductions of ourselves for the year. So we're ready to get to work now, which means we need to stand and say the pledge. So please join me. For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recitation of the vision and mission statements. Vice President Kane will read the vision statement, and Trustee Kinney will read the mission statement.
The vision statement, a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community that develops resilient, innovative, and engaged individuals.
Mission statement, collaborating and inspiring to educate, engage, and empower all.
Thank you. The reading of the minutes. The proposed minutes for the school board meeting and work sessions held on June 24, 2025 are included in your packet, board members. Secretary Martinez reviewed these minutes and found them to be in order and acceptable as presented. May I have a motion, please?
I move the minutes for the school board meeting and work session held on June 24, 2025 be approved as presented.
Of support. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, please attach the roll.
Roll attached, motion carried.
Thank you. All right, special orders and reports. Dr. Anderson?
All right, I am, we have a few people in the crowd today, so I am going to first start by bringing up our Director of Human Resources, Tanya Brody, who's going to introduce you to some of our new staff members, a few administrators, and some teachers.
Good evening, board members. Yes, I'd first like to say thank you, as always, for giving us the opportunity to come here in person and say hello, and giving our new staff members an opportunity to introduce themselves. I know that they're excited to be here, just as much as we are excited to have them and starting in their new roles. We'll start out with Mrs. Margarita Shammy, who's not new to the district. She's a long-term employee, but she is starting in a new role, and we're very excited for her. So go ahead and start with her.
Am I supposed to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay. Well, good evening. I'm Margarita Shammy. I've been in the district for 20 years now. Seventeen of those years were in the Special Education Department. In the last three years, I served as the Assistant Principal at Wilson. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I am very passionate about all things Wilson Middle School. I love that age group. I think they're a diverse group of kids. You get them as kind of like elementary babies, and you send them off to the high school. So it's a very unique age. I love working with those students, and my passion and my desire is to help them grow into amazing individuals. And so we focus on the whole child at Wilson, and we try to make sure that we cover all the bases, from their emotional needs to their social needs, and of course, their academic needs. So I'm very excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm very excited to introduce our new Assistant Principal at Wilson, Lee Cubicki.
Hi, thank you very much for, excuse me, having me tonight. I want to say thank you to the board, very much so, for the vote of confidence in me. I'd like to thank Ms. Shammy as well for bringing me on board. I'm really excited to be here. You know, a couple months ago, I had the opportunity, I was the Assistant Principal at Renton Junior High in Huron, for Huron Schools, and I had an opportunity to do an instructional walkthrough at Wilson. I was kind of enamored by it, and so it just coincided with the fact that there was an opening, and I had an opportunity to apply. So I'm very, very thankful to be here. My wife was in the district for 20 years. I had experience here. I was at Roosevelt a number of years ago. I originally started teaching in Southgate, and I was laid off in 2013. Had an opportunity to come here, really enjoyed that experience. Was out of education for a couple of years, just due to some economic constraints in terms of the market at the time. Was able to get back into education as a teacher, taught, I've taught middle school, I've taught high school. I've been an administrator for two years. I was an assistant principal for the last two years. I really believe in restorative practice. My goal as an educator is to meet with as many kids with the time that I have during the school day, every day. I did that in my previous role, and I want to continue that opportunity here. So thank you very much for this opportunity, and I look forward to speaking with everyone, the families, the students of Wyandotte greatly in this upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. And please tell Adrian we said hello.
Hello, good evening. My name is Stacy Bukowski. I'm the new Assistant Principal at Roosevelt. So thank you very much for this huge opportunity. I am thrilled. I came, come from Wayne Westland Schools. I served as the Assistant Principal, then I was the Principal at the middle school. I was interim for a year, and then I served as Principal for a year. I love getting to know kids and hearing their stories. I'm very involved in my schools. I'm kind of a work junkie when it comes to throwing myself into my work. Me and my husband actually found Wyandotte during 2020, when we just needed to go for a car ride. It ended up being one of our favorite places to visit. We've come down here for a lot of the fairs, the Taco Hop a couple of years ago, and fell in love with the community. So when I saw the posting come up, I'm like, I'm absolutely applying. And I immediately felt like I was at home. So thank you for this opportunity. I am thrilled. I am excited, and I am so pleased to meet you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Donald Lefeu. I'm just, just want to thank you so much for giving me this opportunity as a new fifth-grade teacher for Garfield Elementary. I graduated from U of M Dearborn, and I was able to student teach at McCullough-UNIS. And I'm just very excited to be able to apply my skills and my creativity and everything that I was being able to learn at U of M actually into the classroom more. I was able to take over a classroom for about six weeks during my student teaching, and it was very scary, but also exciting. The people behind me, my mom, my brother, and my nephew, my brother graduated from U of M, and he's a teacher at Harper Woods. And my mom was a teacher for 25 years at, for Dearborn at Salina Intermediate, and she's now retired. But I just was raised in a household of teachers, and I've always excited about teaching. I always wanted to teach. And I have now been a martial arts instructor now for over seven years. And I have been training myself for over 11 years. So again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I just want to be able to apply my skills and everything I've learned in my new fifth-grade class and just be that ultimate role model for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Welcome.
Yes.
Welcome home, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
So with that, I'd like to give them an opportunity to, to exit and enjoy their summer. You're welcome to stay if you wish. I always have my plug for ice cream, and this is a good night for it. So, right around the corner, there's a good place. But we thank you guys for coming out, especially in July. And we look for, I look forward to working with all of you guys in just a couple of weeks. So enjoy every minute you've got until then.
It is hot.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Lovely to meet you. No need to remind us. It's just a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we're at the midpoint of summer right now.
Listen, don't rush it. Don't rush it. All right, we will continue with our regular business, the hearing of the public. Wyandotte Public Schools Board of Education welcomes public discourse. Now is the portion of the meeting where the public may address the board. Those who wish to speak should approach the podium, start, state their name, oh my goodness, state their name, and address the board. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the board and district employees will not answer questions during public commentary. Is there anyone willing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to our action agenda for our organizational meeting. All right. Let me get my ducks in a row here. All right. President. The president's duties include presiding at board meetings, appointing committees and chairpersons, calling special meetings and work sessions, official board spokesperson, chairing Strategic Planning Committee, Legislative Relations Network representative, member of the Wyandotte Public Schools Scholarship Foundation, substitute member for board advisory committee meetings, and review of board meeting agendas with the superintendent.
I move to nominate Teresa Sirkovich for, to serve as Board President.
All right, seeing no nomination, no other nominations, can we take a vote, please?
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
No.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to the Office of Vice President. The Vice President's duties include performing in the absence of the President. I'm now calling for nominations for the Office of Vice President.
I move to nominate Kathy Kane to serve as Board Vice President.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other nominations, let's take a vote, please.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. All right, Treasurer. The Treasurer's duties include official signatory for all checks, review and sign all bills and claims. I'm now calling for nominations for the Office of Treasurer.
I move to nominate Kiri Martinez to serve as Board Treasurer.
She's not here.
The person who is being nominated does not need to be in attendance. She's a duly-elected board member, and so she is eligible to serve. All right, seeing no other nominations, I will call for a vote, please.
Member Kinney?
No.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. All right, Secretary. The Secretary's duties include signing all official documents of the district, including minutes of meetings, diplomas, and meeting notifications. I now call for nominations for the Office of Secretary.
I nominate Wendy Lo Cicerow for Secretary.
Seeing no other nominations, I will take a vote, please.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. All right, we're now going to move on to Committee of the Whole Discussion Agenda. Our topic for tonight is the 2025-26 Board Budget Discussion. All right, everyone okay over there? Okay. So, discussion on the board budget. In your packet, you had the category of expenditures for our own professional development board members. So you'll see what our expenditures were for '23, '24, our '24, '25 proposed and actual, and then we need to have a proposed budget. So I'd just like to offer up a little bit of time for discussion now for what we had from the previous year and where we think we might need to be for professional development for this year. Any discussion?
So we ended around, I don't have it in front of me today, but around 11,000?
Yes. Well, our proposed budget was 11, and we spent 10,555,37.
Okay.
So we were just under our proposed.
Okay.
Maybe we should go up about 1,500, because the cost might go up for classes.
That's what I think.
At least 1,500, if not 2,000.
Maybe two. I think two might be best.
I think the conferences in Traverse City, which travel's going to be a little more.
More travel, okay.
I would rather see more and not use it all than to be caught not having enough.
Agreed.
Yeah. I agree.
I was just going to say, for transparency's sake, can we just share with the community what professional development for the board looks like? Like, what does that involve?
Yep. So the options for board professional development could be a class that we attend virtually online. The beginning board member classes are all virtual, and those are available for board members to take at their own pace online. There's also a number of higher, like, higher-level classes that you can take, like, if you want to take, there's a budgeting class in the beginning slate, but you could take advanced budgeting, or you could take kind of other things. There's conferences that are held periodically. They hold two that are virtual during the year. The winter one is usually a virtual one, and then the spring and the fall conferences are both held in person. And they move them around the state. They're either usually in Lansing or in Traverse City, so board members have an opportunity to go, and that's a great networking opportunity for board members to meet with people who serve in other parts of the state. And then the other option is to have some, we have some in-service come in for us sometimes. If there's something that our board wants to work on, like, we wanted to work on our board self-assessment. So we did a self-assessment last fall, and then we brought in a facilitator to kind of go over that with us, so we could set our board goals in January, and we've been working on those going forward. So sometimes we have an in-house as well. The state also does provide some reimbursement. In our packet here, you can see that there was some level of reimbursement. There's the beginning classes, those 100 levels on all the basic topics are reimbursable to us at $100 a class. And then some of the other classes, like, if you wanted to take one, when we did one about Open Meetings Act, that was a reimbursable class, because that's an important skill that we should all have, and we all learned together to take that class. So we paid for that, but then we were reimbursed from the state at $100 a person. So we try to encourage board members to take those classes, because we feel like an educated board serves our community best, because we are kind of familiar, obviously, we bring our own professional viewpoints to things. Some of us have educational experience, some of us have financial experience, but you can't be an expert in everything. So those help us actually guide us a little bit better, and then help us work better with the superintendent who's managing all those aspects of the district. Thank you. Any other thoughts? So the, if we were at 11, what is your proposal, then? You're saying 1,500 more or 2,000 more? What do you think? Cindy, you're the one who brought that forward.
I'm thinking at least 13,000.
You want to say 13,000 for our budget?
Things go up everywhere you go, so.
Okay.
I mean, we, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
Sure, yeah. No, I agree with that.
Then we don't go over budget either.
Exactly.
Okay, right. Yes, no, because I always want to encourage people to take as many classes as they feel like they have the capacity for, and I, you know, we don't want to get to next, maybe spring, and say, oh, well, sorry, we've run out of money. You can't take any more classes till July. So, okay, all right. So then, Cindy, you're going to be the, Kathy, you're the motion maker, right? So can you just put that amount in?
13,000?
Yes, if that sounds good, when you make the motion for that, and then we will vote on that next. All right?
Are you ready?
I think so. Yep, go ahead.
I move approval of the 2025-26 Board Professional Development Plan and Budget of $13,000.
Support. All right, we just had discussion. Any last thoughts?
No.
Everybody's good? Okay, let's take a roll call, please.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. All right.
Next one, that's mine.
Yep.
All right, so designation of depositories. Annually, we designate where we're going to keep funds that come in from various places, including the state. So included in your board materials is a listing of depositories recommended by the Director of Finance. These depositories will be used to secure school district funds during the school year. Listened depositories are appropriately insured and are improved depositories for public funds in the state of Michigan.
I move the following financial institutions be designated, excuse me, institutions be designated approved 2025-26 depositories for the funds of the school district of the city of Wyandotte, Citizens, JP Morgan Chase, ADVIA Credit Union, Huntington Bank, and Michigan Liquid Asset Fund.
Support. Any discussion? These are the same places that we've been using. We have good relationships with these folks. Okay, if there's no discussion, let's call the roll, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicerow?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
President Sirkovich?
Yes, motion carries. All right, upcoming meetings, August 12, 2025, we'll have a work session at 6:30 PM at the Board of Ed office. I would just remind board members that we talked about being more paperless at our board meetings, so I'm going to encourage you to dig out your Chromebook, wherever it is, and fire it up and charge it, and bring that ready to go. We're going to try to have more handouts and more of our work be on that, so that we're not, you know, wasting paper, and then, and we're also, we can be more efficient, too. If there's something that our presenters are working on, they can just drop it in the drive for us, and then we'll have it right in front of us, and we can kind of scroll at our leisure. So just a reminder, we're going to be working towards that. And then on August 26, we have our next regular meeting again here, 7:00 PM at City Hall.
Will it be going on Bernie's tour on the 12th?
I believe we're going to do that on the 26th before the, before the meeting.
Okay.
That'll give Bernie as much time as possible to get his projects done.
Yeah, because they're still working, the 12th is a little early to do it at the work session, so we'll have that ahead of time. It won't be an official meeting. We'll just take, we'll put it out to board members. Depending on, I don't know what he's going to want to show us, so you all can give us a timeline based on travel and whatnot, but then we'll.
We'll give out all the details to you.
Yes, we'll land here. So maybe do note to yourself, maybe to plan a little bit earlier for that night, to go on the tour, to see what Bernie's been working on with his guys. All right, consent agenda. Because items on the consent agenda are routine, and there's little need for discussion, one motion can complete this part of the agenda. If anyone is interested in copies of reports, recommendations, information, please contact the superintendent's office at 759-6002. May I have a motion, please?
I move approval of the Board of Education bills in the amount of $125, and the bills and vouchers in the amount of $8,748,230.49.
Support. Any discussion? The vouchers, you have the ledger in front of you? All right, let's take a roll call, please.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicerow?